Okay, it's time to call the meeting's order. Sandy, would you please call roll call? Councilor Brandy?
Here.
Brigger?
Here.
Frohberg?
Yes.
Hampton?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening and thank you for coming. And tell you that you could make comments on any of the things as they appear on the agenda. And if you have items that you would like to discuss that are not on our agenda, item number four, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on agenda allows for that. Before we start the regular meeting, the council and I would like to offer our condolences to the Mike Rick's family. Mike passed away today. He was the superintendent of our water treatment plant. So we'd like to offer our thoughts and prayers to their family today. Moving on to two consent of agenda, we'd like
I'm sorry.
Uh huh. In consent of agenda, we'd like to modify that agenda and flip A and B of number seven. Mr. Behrens has to leave and be at another meeting, so we'd like to have consent of the agenda with A and B on number seven, six, excuse me, just switched. Okay? Is there a motion to approve consent of agenda? A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the June 13, 2011 council meeting. And C, receipts and dispersments. Any questions or comments on that?
I'll make that motion and with the addition of item number six, switching A with B. Second.
Would you call for a vote, please? Councilor Brigger?
Yes.
Frohberg?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
abstained.
Brandy?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Number three, projects. A, wastewater treatment plant project. I believe Darren is here to speak to us about that this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I'll try to be brief and do the point. In general, wastewater treatment plant is approaching completion. Right now, the Erickson people are now working in the main lift station. In fact, last night, the lift station was running on old pumps. And this morning, it's running on temporary pumps, but on the new generator, thankfully, because last night, the old generator tripped itself out because it kept getting hot from pumping all the water. However, the old generator is now out in the yard. That doesn't say we're done, but they're moving that direction. And I think the, with your permission, Mayor, probably the bigger things are
Item two and three?
Item two and three, and actually through six. Item two and item three, don't need to be scary, but that is the structural problems that we've been talking about for several months in the RBC building. We've got a solution to that. And item two is the very structural solution. It is higher than what I had thought it would be, but after looking at their breakdown, I don't think it's out of line. There is a lot of work in there. And in fact, the east wall, as we start to look at it, the east wall is bowed some eight inches, kind of like this. So you can't even put a vertical column in it. So it gets fairly technically complicated. That's item two. Item three, I had a meeting with Adam and Jim Frederick. Jim Johnson, I think, was unable to attend at that point with the utilities committee. And we talked about the windows in that room. The windows are in very poor condition. And the question was asked, what would it take if we were just to block those windows up? And so item three is the proposal to do all the structural work plus blocking up the windows. And quite honestly, for $30,000-plus dollars, I would recommend against that. I think that's not a good spend of money. Those windows need attention, but not $30,000 in attention. I think there may be another way to do that. And, but we know what it would cost, and we know the answer.
Darren, when you talk about number two is straightening the wall and fixing it, and number three is replacing the windows, right?
Plus the wall.
Plus doing, plus number two. And really, it isn't, we can't really straighten it too much, but we can hopefully prevent it from going further. It is serious. I'm not going to tell you it's going to fall down today, because I don't think it is. If it was, I'd be having a whole different discussion. But it is serious. We've been in there painting, preparing to recote that block. And I had to tell the painters to take it easy, because the mortar just peels out from between the blocks.
Okay, just, I hate to interrupt.
No, please.
But this is in regards to the wall that's bowed because it didn't have the columns put in?
That's correct. That's correct.
Like the previous plan that building was built, called for, but it wasn't done?
That's correct. And actually, let me detail a little bit more on that even. The original design, when you go through the calculations today, is inadequate. It is not, it is not strong enough to do the job that it was asked to do. And that's why we see a lot of cracks. To make the matters worse, a lot of the things that were designed in the wall aren't in the wall. There should be reinforcing steel, vertical, with the concrete block quarters being filled. And here as we can tell, never happened. There should be horizontal steel. And here as we can tell, it's not there. So it is a serious situation. I'm not going to tell you it's going to fall down, because it's been up there for 30 years, so it's been tested. I would encourage any of you guys to go out and look, though, and see what has happened since we started to paint. And maybe expounding on that just a briefly. I would not, at this point, suggest that we go through and tuck point that wall. It may not be beautiful, but I think we would spend a huge amount of money for a little bit of benefit if we were to go in and grind out those joints and tuck point them. The other part of it is, I would, at this point, suggest against caulking those joints. I think we paint them and leave them. They're not beautiful. But the reality is, as I was telling some earlier, years ago, they quit painting railroad bridges, because when they painted them, they would get cracks, and you couldn't see the cracks. And I really want us to be able to see those cracks. And long after I'm gone, I want your people to be able to see those cracks. And to see, gosh, this one grew. I think it's a big deal. So it won't be pretty. The paint will do its job, but it won't be beautiful. So I don't think there's a lot of reason to spend a lot of money there.
When you have this $43,000 to fix this problem, what does that entail?
That entails building on what I'm going to call the west wall, because the plant kind of sits at an angle, nine concrete block columns. They'll be reinforced, you know, steel reinforced and filled with concrete. That's really, more than anything else, to provide a strong back for the wall. Because the walls are doing this. We want to give them some strength like that, so that they can't bend. And so there's nine, I believe it's nine, nine pilasters along that west wall. They go all the way to the top to help support that masonry roof. The roof is made out of precast concrete. It's very, very heavy. And that's part of the concern. If it was a lighter roof, not a big deal. It also includes going on what I would call east wall and putting in galvanized steel columns to help brace that wall up. Because it is bowed, it's got soil behind it. And it is literally bowed like that, about eight inches. And we put a straight edge on it, it kind of gets scary, because you can watch, you can see the curvature in the wall. We want to stop that. If it goes a lot further, that's when you are subject to a possible failure. So that's what this entails, and it's not very easy work. It's a lot of money, but it's, they're not out of line. If I look at other projects similar to this, I think they've been reasonable with this with item number two. Number three, adding the glass and blocking those windows in would be, it'd be nice to fix those windows. But I think we can fix them for a lot less than $30,000. That's the short answer. Did I get your question answered?
Yes. Thank you.
So would you, would just get a separate bid for filling in those windows, or what?
Possibly. I think that might be the best way. Call somebody local, see if they can go fix what's there. They're not in great shape, but maybe it's a matter of caulking them and putting some new sealant in them. Once the walls are fixed up, the windows will stay in better condition. Right now, the walls have actually twisted to the point where it's blown the frames out of the windows in a few places, as well as some of the brick. And the windows look a lot like, oh, like the windows out here in the front. They're called a storefront, so they have an aluminum channel. And channels have literally been removed from their base, probably from the walls bending over time. And they weren't put in there in 1978. They do need new seals. But I think we can do it for a lot less money than 30 grand. So I personally would recommend number three. I just don't think it's a good spend of money.
You would not recommend?
I would not recommend three. Number two, I think, although it's up to you folks ultimately, I really think that that building needs attention, and it is important. Number two was not horribly out of line in price. It is expensive, but not out of line for what we've seen in other types of projects like this.
I realize there's no guarantees in some of this.
Right.
Will that stop it?
We hope so. We've done a lot to try to make sure that it will. I would feel a lot better tonight if that was in place. And I'd be able to tell you a lot better that, yeah, I think the building will be in all right shape and will last another 30 years. And really, that's what we're trying to get out of it. And we put, we put a huge amount of money in this facility on a 30-year loan. It'd sure be nice to make sure that it lasts 30 more years. And that's really what our target was. We do have, by the way, we did set aside $100,000 for these kind of things in the project. Funded contingency. At this point, we have spent about $11,000 of that. And if you remember, one of them was Mid-American Energy deciding that they wanted to bring power in overhead at the plant, that required a different bunch of transformers, for somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000. The other one was requests from plant personnel to get power over to the metal building out there to get lights and some power in that building. And that was about $5,500 worth. So that's about $11,000 plus or minus. So we deducted that much from the $100,000 that's in the bank. Not that I would encourage it, but you can over, you can spend more than that $100,000. We could maybe do some other things. There was an allowance on there for a cathodic protection system at the pump station of $18,000. And we could transfer that money into here, too, if we decided. What I want to be careful of is, we're not done. And we're working in that pump station. And the pump station, we very well could dig up something in there that we don't find. So although we have money in the bank, we want to be careful about how we spend it.
Counsel, do you want to act on number one? A, number one, you make, do you have any further questions of Darren or any other discussion on this point?
Well, do you want to go ahead and continue any of these other change orders that you?
Yes, if you like. I can discuss whatever you like.
So they are, okay, you want to look them all and then decide which ones you want to?
Okay. And I think that's a good idea, from the standpoint that you can see how they would interact. Item number four is a proposed change for $3,900. And what that amounts to is, Mid-American is changing what they're going to require for their power drop at the main pump station. They've had a personnel change. They're now on the first, fourth guy. Unfortunately, guy number one had one idea, two had a different idea, three has a different idea, and four has a different idea. None of which, except for number one, were compatible with what we've built out here. And they simply said, well, you can have your choice. You have power or you don't have power. And we designed based on what number one said and what he wanted. And now that has changed. It's kind of been a moving target. I understand, you know, they've changed personnel and changed manuals or whatever else, but that's what number four is. And it's pretty much a requirement. They've changed the way they require to go into commercial services. Item number five. Five is an important one. This has kind of been ongoing for most of the project. This one was basically, anything we dig up out there that we find that isn't usable. And when I last met with the subcommittee, that was a smaller number, because we've opened up a digester, and we found piping that was completely destroyed. I mean, it's worn out. And to keep things moving, I said, get it fixed. They have not been paid, and this has not been, obviously, totally approved. But, you know, it's a couple of thousand here, a couple thousand there kind of thing. This amounts to some valving around the chlorination tank that hasn't worked for 20 years. That was fixed. It amounts to some piping that we've dug into that is in very poor condition. A digester piping that was supposed to be like this and had ended up like that. And all the bolts down here are just destroyed, and they've been under sludge for decades. So for the first time, we actually got down and got to go down in there and take a look. And this also amounted to some chlorination equipment that is, that was intended to be saved and had bad O-rings and a bunch of bad controllers that were replaced as well. And that amounted to a few hundred dollars. Basically, that's a year and a half's worth of digging around. And actually, I feel pretty good that it could have been a lot more serious, and it came out not so bad. That's an important one. Because that is a lot of
Well, you did talk to the subcommittee. I kind of told you to go ahead.
You bet. Yeah, I want to make sure that I'm doing what you folks want. Number one priority when we're out there is to try to make a decision so we don't hold up construction, and you get a bill for not building things. But yet, I want to make sure we're running it through and keeping you apprised of what's going on. It is important. Item number six is purely optional. Item six, we were asked by, I think, the subcommittee and some other council to look at what it would take to add controls to two pump stations. The one that's over by the golf course, I don't know if any of you are familiar with it or not. I know who Jim is. And Gary, you are. It's way down over the hill, I know who Jim is, there. Way down over the hill, there's an old pump station. And the plant operators don't have any idea what's going on with that pump station on a normal day-to-day basis. They have to go out there and check it. If it loses power in the middle of the night, they don't know it. The other one is up here this direction, and it's kind of in the same, same situation, except that it's a little easier to get to. So the request was asked, can we get some kind of data back from those pump stations so we know if we've had a pump failure, if we've got too much water in the pump station, something like that? That's what this does. This is not, not the fancy version. I got six different proposals from Automatic Systems, and they range anywhere from this $23,000-ish range to about $100,000. If we wanted to go into the SCADA system with all the fancy stuff, it was way, way too expensive. This amounts to a cell phone call-out system. If, if we have a low, low water level in the pump station, it calls the operators and tells them there's a problem. High water level, same thing. Power outage, same thing. They do not get it reported to the SCADA at the plant. All they get is, hey, I'm in trouble. And that's to do the two stations. Now, here comes the other part of this. You will have a cell phone bill for this, because it does call out on a cell phone line. I don't know exactly what that would entail per month, but probably somewhere in the $40 range, I would guess.
Okay, we've got controls like that out in hog house. We can dial up, check, see what the temperature is and all those things.
Yep.
So is that also workable for this? Can they dial up and go, you know, what's happening?
They cannot with this one, because it was only made to be a one-way, it'll call out. Part of the problem with this thing is, isn't the control system, it's the electrical that's in the pump station. We simply don't have the data collection equipment in the station. To get the information you want, you got to put in more, more pieces of equipment. So all I had to do with this thing was, give me the minimum. So all it is, a flow. But it could be upgraded to what you're asking for.
How do you disagree? But that would eliminate them that need to go out there every day to check the damage?
I would say no. They still need to check them. But what it does give is some security that, gosh, 2:42 in the morning, pump station goes into alarm instead of running over. They get the call, and they know that they need to go out and look. And that's a tough one to get to. So it gives you some basic security. It's not a lot of data, but it was the most cost-effective one that there was.
How much would that take extra so they could call and see what's going on?
Well, I can find out.
I'm just curious.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing maybe in the $10,000 range, but that's purely a guess.
Is that important, have we approved that number six tonight?
No.
Or something like that?
No, we can wait. Would you like me to find that out?
I would like, I was just curious, because
Yeah, no, that's no problem. I can, I can ask that question.
I figure if I, you know
Oh, heck yeah. If you can do it at your hog buildings.
Yeah, and they're, you know, well, it's a lot further away than that.
You bet. I can do that. I can find that out for you.
I was just curious.
No, fair question.
Counsel, do you have any other questions on items two through six? Any further discussion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve them, too.
Okay. There's been a motion made to approve consideration of approving change order number three for Erickson Construction Company.
Number two.
No, but that is number two.
That's number two.
Item two, the change order three.
In the change order three?
Okay. Change order three.
It's my understanding you didn't want to do number three, because it's $76,000. And number two was the one that you wanted to approve.
Right. Number two, on the agenda. For change order. For change order number three. For $43,000. For $43,000, $84.
All right, and is there a second?
A second.
Call for a vote. Councilor Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brigger?
Yes.
Frohberg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on to A, number four. Consideration of approving change order number four for Erickson Construction in the amount of $3,935.97 for the Mid-American request.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. Councilor Frohberg?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brigger?
Yes.
Motion carried. A, number five.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
We need to vote on consideration of approving the change order number three for the total amount of $76,922.
Okay, I thought you combined the two of them. All right, we'll move back to A, number three.
Just to make it
There was one or the other.
One or the other. Both the change order threes, they just chose the one, the $43. Okay, I just want to make my
And then we're going to go out and seek another
Yep.
bid or whatever.
Okay, are we ready to move?
Sorry.
That's okay. A, number five. Consideration, did we do, you interrupted me. We didn't do a Mid-American, did we?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, A, number five. Consideration of approving change order number five for Erickson Construction in the amount of $10,315.23 for the pipes that were in the chlorination. And the committee had okayed that previously, so
So move.
I'll second it.
For change order number five of Erickson Construction for $10,315.23.
Call for a vote. Councilor Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brigger?
Yes.
Frohberg?
Yes.
Motion carried. A, number six, I understand that you are not ready to make a motion or that you'd like to table that and have some more information.
Yes.
Okay, and another meeting? Okay. We thank you very much, Darren.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for the information and for being here.
I will, I'll leave you some signature sheets before I go.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Okay, if there are none, we'll move on to number five. License and permits. A, consideration of 2011, 2012 cigarette permits. This is the annual, and they are in your patent. B, new specialty net permit for the Sac City Depot, DBA Sac City Depot Class B beer permit with outdoor service for July 2, 2011.
So move.
Call for a vote. Councilor Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brigger?
Yes.
Frohberg?
Yes.
Okay. Five, C, renewal license for Wally's Food Pride, DBA Sac City Food Pride Class E. Liquor permit with Sunday scales, carryout beer and carryout wine.
No problem, John. So move.
Second.
Call for a vote. Councilor Frohberg?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brigger?
Yes.
Motion carried. Six, remember, we are going to switch those two. So Region 12 to address the council on the use of tax increment financing. Joe, thank you for being here.
Not at all. I'm going to hand out some more sheets. And I'm not going to shlock up these, I just want you guys to have these for general.
And I might suggest that people here tonight, that this is for educational purposes. We all want to know what tax increment financing entails, and we want to be educated on it, so
If anybody in the audience wants to hear this, they do have some extras. There's two, two sheets there, just hand them around until they're
Adam asked that I brought, and actually, I talked to him, he came here a couple of months ago. Talked to you guys, you guys were looking at now that relocated Highway 20 is nearing completion. And we're going to talk about potential for economic development along the road of Fort D. The interchange up there. Adam, I'd like to sit down. Do you guys have any tip?
The city does not currently have any tip.
Is everyone pretty kind of familiar with what tip is? It's kind of a general overview. The idea of TIP for tax increment financing falls under Iowa's urban renewal law, Section 4.3, the diagonal code. Basically allows cities and counties in situations to capture taxes generated from new growth. So if something is built, property increases in value, the taxes that are generated from that new growth can be captured and used for economic development projects. And the taxes captured include evergreens, but cities, school district, any extension, community college, those types of things. Generally, those are put into a fund that the city or county in that situation can use for economic development use. Now, they can use funds for pretty much about anything if the city finds in a plan that they have to prepare upfront to do that. A lot of cities use TIP to fund infrastructure for business parks, roads, water, sewer, storm sewer, that type of thing. Another thing that's fairly common with TIP is using those funds to provide incentives to businesses who are actually going to build crate jobs, you know, increase the tax base, things like that. A lot of times, those are done through what they call rebate agreement. Basically, the business pays their taxes, and then the city rebates all or a portion of those back to the business. It's very similar to a tax abatement, but TIP is a little more flexible in what you can actually do. Tax abatement has some limits on years and the percentage you can actually debate. So TIP has some advantages there. Now, that's kind of TIP in a nutshell.
What's the downside to it?
Well, some of the, I guess you could consider disadvantages. It does lock up, you know, if you, if you do a TIP project, it locks up those funds, those new taxes generated for a period of time, until whatever you decided to do with them, whether it was pay off the sewer, pay off the street, rebate them back to the business. It locks up those funds for that period of time, so that they're not available to the cities, the school districts generally. Now, the schools, under current Iowa law, do get some of that back. The state makes up some of that. Their levy, if you capture it, put it into the TIF fund, the state makes up, I think it's $5.42. First $5.42 or something like, right around there, gives that back to the school district. So the school doesn't necessarily lose those funds, and they didn't have them to begin with. And the school district's levy is a little different than the city's levy anyway. And how they, and I'm not, not an expert on how that all works, but that is one of the things that is a little bit of a downside. And the city doesn't get those funds for the general fund. You know, so there's potential for, I guess, lost revenue, if you say it. But in hindsight, you know, the other way to look at it is you never had those funds to begin with. So there can be, can be some really good things with TIF. If it's properly used, we've seen a lot of examples where TIF has been a really good tool for cities to encourage economic development.
Can you give us some examples of where communities our size have used that?
Oh, sure.
If they're handy.
Yeah, and we've worked in, you know, we've seen TIF in cities, the 200 people. I can give you a real close by example in Odbold, and this is well over 10 years ago. Larry Beckman Motors built a new facility out there. The city ran water and sewer out to that, it was on the edge of town, right along the highway. Good place for a new business, did have water and sewer out there. And I think they spent, it was around $30,000 at that time to extend those services out. They used TIF for TIF district. They borrowed the money in turn, they borrowed it from, I think, the city fund. And then paid themselves back the cost of putting those utilities in. And then I think it only took them, I think maybe four or five years, and they had paid off. Effectively, the way to look at that is that business paid for their own utilities to be installed. So that business could be built later.
Just not upfront.
Just not upfront, right. So that's a good example. We've seen another common thing that we've started to see, like I mentioned, is rebate agreements. Where a business maybe wants to locate, says, you know, to help our cash flow. That business like this agreed up, CTS, some of you guys might be familiar with that. They built a new building there. The city is rebating the property taxes they pay up to, I can't tell exactly what the amount is anymore. Up to a certain amount, they're getting that rebated back in return. So it's very similar to property tax abatement, but they'll get a good portion of their taxes back. They'll pay their taxes when the bill comes due in September and March. And then the city, when they get those funds, they'll write them a check back. The city also had some expense in, I think, electric and storage or out there too. The city getting their, their own costs paid back through that TIF as well.
If I understood you correctly, it's not necessary to rebate 100% of the taxes?
That's correct.
You can choose a percentage?
Yep, yep. A lot of times that's negotiated with the business in the city. Which, you know, can provide, again, a lot of demands, you know, the city may have to invest to get services out there. Water, sewer, electric, gas, whatever it is. The business wants, you know, help with the cash flow, you know, to pay for that building. You kind of make, you can make both things work. And generally, the way those things are done, you do a form upfront and kind of figure out, you know, how much taxes may be paid over a period of time.
How common are TIF districts across the state?
Very, very, it's getting really good. A common tool, which has drawn the attention of the legislature at different times. And occasionally you'll see discussion, it hasn't come up so much this year because there's been such an issue with the budget. And then getting that, that dealt with. But there have been different times where legislature has said, we've got to look at TIF and how it's, how it's used. Whether that's right or wrong, whatever, sometimes political, you know, it's just a matter of how things, how it's used and what people feel.
How many communities, being that it is kind of prevalent out there, how many communities are you there in front that are concerned about the effects of rollback on?
That's, that's a very good question.
Because that kind of, you can assess that from a risk standpoint.
Well, yeah, that's a very good question. We've actually got, let's do, three projects right now that we're working with that are kind of on hold because we're not sure how that, depending on what the legislature determines, how that's going to affect that TIF. You know, if it's, you know, we know right now it's 100% of value on commercial property. If it goes down to 60%, 175%, or that can have a serious effect on cities' ability to repay debt with TIF infrastructure. And that's going to affect, there are a lot of cities that have, cities have come out of debt from putting in business parks, things like that, that, that might struggle with.
Do a lot of communities use it for housing projects?
There are a lot of communities that use it for housing projects. Housing, using TIF for housing has a few more limitations than using it for businesses. You have a limit of generally 10 years where you can collect that. You can go up to 15 if you can get the approval of the other taxing, districts, the school, the county, the community college, those things. But yeah, we have seen a lot of cities that have also, also done that. You know, that's, can be a little bit more tricky, especially in speculative type nature because you don't necessarily know how fast houses are going to get built.
Are you familiar, familiar with the Sibley 28E agreement?
I am. Bill had, Bill had dropped off a copy of the agreement and I looked.
Are those pretty atypical, or do you see?
I did, Bill, asking some of our colleagues at COGS around the state, and there are, there are a few of those out there. We've never worked in a project, but it's very, I think, a pretty good use of, of TIF as a tool. A very cooperative effort, you know, between the city and the county. So if you guys, you know, got into situations and said, we can really work this out. I think this is going to be beneficial for both the city and the county. And I think it's something that might be a good, a good tool to look into.
And with that, I'd like to recognize two of the county officials here, Jim Dowling, the county auditor, and Rick Teck, one of our supervisors here.
Bob Hawes.
Oh, Bob, okay. Oh, sorry, Bob.
I know.
So we have three county officials here.
Can you explain that Sibley 28E a little bit? What is it?
Do you want us to explain it, or I'd be happy to talk about it, or if you?
Go ahead.
Sure. What happened out there is they, they moved the highway outside of the city of Sibley. And they're, they saw a possibility where they could develop outside of city limits. Except that the opportunity for growth they had wanted city utilities. So a 28E agreement was established between the city of Sibley and the county to establish a, a TIF district outside of the community. And the joint agreement basically was, the basis of all these county-city agreements are that the city will run the utilities out to the park and that the county will set up a TIF district, manage a TIF district. And there'll be some form or fashion about how much each party pays as far as the utilities provided to the district goes and how much they recollect off of the cost associated with running those utilities. Of course, which utilities are included is a negotiable point as well.
As well as screeching.
Correct.
Correct. And we'll see to it that all of you do get a copy of that Sibley agreement, and I apologize for.
I think I have a copy, if you guys want one, Jim.
That basically pays the annexation, doesn't it?
It's an alternative to annexation. I believe in the case of Sibley, and I'll have to go back and look, and maybe you know this for, whether this is true or not. In the question about running those utilities, part of the offering from the county was that the county roadways were used to run the actual utilities to the district. So that was one of the things offered by the county in a part of the agreement, was the use of the roadways.
Yeah, the advantage is definitely the, you know, bringing the annexation, which isn't necessarily good or bad either. But, you know, annexation is kind of its own animal. And, you know, the same type of situation that you run into here, they did. You've got a lot of properties in between what may be the eventual area that's developed. It may be tough to get those, those folks to, you know, to be annexed into the city. This is why, where, you know, the city and county can cooperate. You still get the development, which is ultimately what everybody wants to see. You know, is the jobs and the investment and sort of the ultimate benefit.
Now, I, I did run into a TIF district situation over, over central part of the state where they had not only locked in the property taxes, but had locked in the local option. They were identifying what local option sales tax was being collected as a result of that and.
There is, yep, there is a local option sales tax tip. I haven't been involved with those, but that is another thing that you've seen as very common. I think in central Iowa, there's a few.
Sounded like they were a little bit more complex to manage.
It is, it's a little bit more complex to manage. Part of that is, it's a little more unpredictable. You really, you really don't know. You know, sales tax recognition, I'm sure you guys don't, the city can vary widely, you know, depending on, depending on the property taxes, you're going to know. You're going to know your budget, it's going to be set, the valuations are set. You know, that'll change a little bit over time, but for the most part, you kind of know what it's going to be.
Rick?
Yeah, we've, over time, have looked at different TIF projects and, and read and studied a little bit. I, I have some concern, in some places, they have not necessarily identified a specific purpose for a specific number of years. And I think everyone's goal needs to be to have a sunset where that development comes on to full property tax. It, it should not be something that goes on and on and on. And I know in areas that has happened. I know in other areas, they've done it properly, from my perspective, and have identified a given purpose, identified what it was going to cost, and this is the length of time it's going to take. And at the end of that, it's over. And, and I think that needs to be the goal of everyone when you, when you think about going down that path.
So in regards to your comments, you're saying, like, say you set it up for 10 years and say a property gets built half mile out of town, you're going to do a TIF district, at the end of 10 years, it's over with? And then who gets money?
Then it goes back to normal taxation.
Then it goes back to normal taxation, but the taxing entity still stays the same? Whether it's shared between county and city or whatever?
These, this is a little bit new for me. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because we turn around and the city turns around and puts out.
Sure.
Utilities out there, okay, then, then years.
It's a utility to pay for, it shouldn't be.
Well, but it does in a way. I mean, I, I understand that consideration, but I just, in most of the ones that we've looked at, it was either a city or a county situation and, and you didn't have that shared consideration later on. But, but it's something that certainly can be forgotten.
The TIF district was established for the construction and payment of that project. It's not for maintenance and that type of thing.
Okay.
That was your question?
Yes. Yep, I might add that, you know, and it's been a while since I've read that Sibley agreement, but that's more or less, I think, spelled out in their agreement. And that's something, you know, if we would go ahead with this, we'll be, you know, defined perhaps similar to what Sibley did. And it is, it is a good consideration as far as trying to do a forced annexation. This kind of gets the same thing done, and you don't have to force that upon people if they don't want it. It's, it's a good, a good way to maybe have local options.
Okay, any more unanswered questions?
You might be talking about two different kinds of TIF also. When you're talking about strictly infrastructure, and then you're talking about economic development. There are two different kinds of TIFs, correct?
No, it's, TIF all falls under one, one section of the Idaho Code. So what, what you can do with the TIF, you set that out in your urban renewal plan to begin with. Now, there are some cities that limit it. Maybe the urban renewal plan is set up, all we're going to do is pay for these water and sewer lines, that's all we're going to allow.
Okay, because the one example that you gave, out of the five TIFs that we had in Sack County, is the only one that's ever retired.
Right, right, and they retired it pretty quick.
Which is, which, like Rick said, that's, that's kind of what everybody thinks it's designed for.
It is, and I, I agree.
You put your infrastructure in, get it paid for, and then be done with it.
Right.
There's also, excuse me, there's also another TIF out there that's going on right now, an economic development TIF, which I didn't know, I thought maybe they were different. But I don't see any end in sight in that. And the two, and the two businesses that are gaining the most from it are probably going to be getting a lot of benefit from that for a long time.
Sure. Well, I definitely agree with you, and I am a big proponent for exactly what Rick says. If you want to do it, you set it out ahead of time. Now, in an urban renewal plan, you can allow, you might want to leave yourself open for a little bit of room in the future. Because in a situation, you know, we use this as an example, north of town, you set out, the city's going to put in water and sewer lines. You get that, you know you're going to have some development to generate some taxes, pay that off in eight or 10 years or whatever. That's great, there's where you start out. Now, five years down the road, you might get a manufacturing plant that comes in and is going to make, you know, make a, whatever, some kind of product and create 150 jobs. And the city really wants to work with them and says, we can provide this, this incentive. You can always go back and change it.
You do have that option?
Absolutely. You're going to go through another process, it's going to be exactly like setting it up. Now, it's going to be a little bit of, you know, some meetings and things like that, but you can always change it. At least, at least now you can. Now, that's not to say that the legislature will at some point decide, we need to change this. You know, of course, everything you do for cities and counties is under that.
When you talk about setting it up though, and then coming back and changing it, as far as the borders or boundaries of the TIF district, would it be a good idea to make them, and we're, we're talking about the Highway 20 corridor, to make the boundaries as long and as large, or, you know, to include, you know, possible scenarios down the road to include that? And certainly not, and perhaps not limit the area that we're going to be addressing. Would it be good to have that as large as possible, considering, you know, what our alternatives are down the road? As opposed to, let's say, limiting it to a certain area and then saying, oh, we have to, need to go back and rechange the boundaries? Would it be good to establish the larger boundaries upfront?
You can, you can actually, there, there, because there are a couple of different things you need to do. The first thing you do is establish your urban renewal area, if you have an urban renewal plan. That plan can be as big as you, you know, that area can be as big as you want. Now, as far as what you actually, what revenues you collect is another ordinance. That does not necessarily match the boundaries of that original area. And a lot of cities will do that. You set up your, your area big because you don't necessarily know exactly where something's going to happen. Until your ordinance, you have an ordinance that provides for division of taxes, allows you guys to basically take those, everybody's incremental taxes. That ordinance might cover a smaller area. And then the rest of the area, everybody gets their taxes like there was no tax. City gets their share, county gets their share, school district gets their share. Five years down the road, if you have something to win, you amend that ordinance, you can take that chunk. And then you're, you're taking taxes from that area too. So yes, you can, you can certainly do that. As far as whether or not that's a, that's a good idea, that's something that, you know, you guys as local officials would have to make that determination. A lot of cities do that.
Would you be willing to come back again?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and I'm, I'm okay. Yeah, I mean, if people got questions, we can certainly get touched out. But yeah, I can certainly come back, and I know at some point you may want to come and talk to the board.
He has another meeting, he has to be timed.
Okay. But, like I said, I got a few minutes yet. Yeah, so I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yep.
Is there also, I don't know exactly how to say, is it also used sometimes in the TIF to expand that TIF area into areas that you don't consider new construction possibilities? To do projects on stuff that's already there?
Yes.
So instead of, instead of repairing your swimming pool, for example, instead of bonding and taxing that to the people, you include that swimming pool as part of your TIF area? And then you can use the TIF dollars to repair that swimming pool?
That does happen. I, I'm not going to say whether or not that's a good policy, but that does happen.
And that would be something that we might want to avoid?
Again, I, I can't make that decision because I'm not, you know, I'm not elected official like you guys are. I'm not sure that that's the best use of, if it does happen, it's not illegal.
I know, that's, the legality is the problem with this thing because you're going to be a brain to figure this thing out.
Right. Now, there, now there are also TIF districts that are set up in an existing part of town. You see a lot of them in downtown areas where the city's going to redevelop. You know, do streetscapes or help businesses rebuild or, you know, do new storefronts and, and, you know, that's a little, that's a little different section of the code. But you see it a lot of times. Or, you know, infrastructure in a downtown area, you know, water and sewer that serves those businesses and you know that the businesses are going to expand and grow and create more taxes. And so you're still serving the same, same purpose, it's just a little bit different. Bottom line, all you're doing with the TIF is taking the generated new tax money and paying off the debt that. That's correct. In terms of fix the infrastructure. Absolutely, yeah.
So, Joe, are there some, is there a negative side to Dr. Branny's question about making a bigger TIF district than you actually need it? Can anyone give him time?
You know, not necessarily. I think a lot of it just has to do with the responsibility of the local officials to know that you're, you're not getting into something that you're, that really isn't part of the project. The other thing, if you do get too big and you do look at too big of an area and nothing happens, you might limit the number of years, you know, say something happens eight years down the road, and you have a 10-year, or 15-year, or 20-year TIF. You might lose the opportunity to get, you know, because you set your base so long, you lost a lot of years off of that.
You might lose value.
Yeah, you might, right. That's another thing that, that should happen, values sometimes do go down. You know, right now, I think we're probably, especially with the egg, you know, we're seeing property values probably go up. But that's cyclical, you know, as you certainly know, I mean, that's been, you know, that can change.
I thank you very much for being here.
Well, if you guys want me to come back, or if you get to the point, I know a lot of cities, you know, if something happens, especially a situation like this, you may set up a committee. set up a committee, you know, between the city and the county, and we can certainly sit down and talk to that committee, give you some more examples if you want to see. I know Adam's got the agreement between Sibley and Osceola County. I don't know if all you guys have seen that, Professor Sibley's at Star.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you guys, Joe.
And thank you for coming, and asking questions about it, and for sharing that as well.
I'd say for the rest of the meeting.
All right, thank you guys. If you guys have any other questions, don't be afraid to give us a call. All right, thanks.
Okay, we are moving on to six A, to consideration of going into closed session under Chapter 21(c) on pending litigation. I am.
I have call in.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to go into closed session. A second?
Second.
Call for a vote. Councilman Hanson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Rowhart?
Yes.
Motion carried. This will not take too long, and you're welcome to come back.
You were asking for anything, and you kicked it out.
With your consideration.
You have any suggestions, any changes that you want to make?
Well, I guess two weeks would, you know, say arranged, you know, and they can't burn or whatever, they come in here and do it. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts. I don't really care. But I think it should be long enough that, you know, if you give them 24 hours, you get a week's worth of money, they'll pay. I give them two weekends, so arrange it on the end.
Are you good with the two weeks then?
What are you going to do with this open hardship thing? That's kind of up to individuals, correct?
Correct.
What do you consider a hardship? You know, that means that we think open to questions.
Correct. Well, I mean, I guess one statement I would make there is, is that if you're leaving it in the purview of the city administrator and the city clerk to make a determination on whether to approve them or not, I'm always happy to get more direction from the council on exactly what you want us to recognize as a hardship, not to have a hardship, what isn't a hardship. Because otherwise, as you can see, it's very discretionary for us to determine what is a...
Because otherwise, we're going to wind up with them here going, okay, how come?
Yeah.
So Lo got it and...
Well, and I mentioned that before, that we should discuss the appeal process. Because if Sandy or I, or future whoever fills these two positions denies them, and they want to appeal to it, they always have the option of appealing to the council in the case of where they disagree with some kind of policy decision. So it really always opens that opportunity up. And not only does it open an opportunity for that up, but let's say Jim wants to burn it, I'm his neighbor, and I know you're going to give him, you're considering giving him permission, and I find out that the city administrator down there gave him permission. I want to appeal to the council, to hear the council hear my argument that I don't think he should get that permit. There's a whole...
And you've got to have two weeks because we might not have a council meeting.
There's a whole element of the appeal process that's unclear. And then, I believe it was Curtis, I think, a couple of weeks ago, that brought up another point that we really haven't hashed out yet. And it's kind of outside of the scope of what we've been discussing, but it opens up a broader issue within the burning allowance, is that arguably, any, you're open for two months, someone could burn on their property every day from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for 60 days straight. And under the terms of, well, let me step back and say, assuming that it's not windy out, you could do so without any violation to the, to the open burning law. And really, the way the law sits today, or even with this ordinance, we really have not addressed that portion of the issue.
Well, another thing I was thinking about here is the issue of what's getting burned. Because you could hear a lot of neighbors who are quick. We're not talking about leaves and tree limbs here.
They still have to abide by the original burning law, that they can only burn off the yard.
Yard waste. That's going to be in this one too.
Only that's part of it.
That's built into the overall ordinance. So I guess the first thing, you've kind of answered my question that you, that to some degree, I didn't hear any opposition to the 14 days, so I'll move forward with the 14 days. But does anyone have any thoughts on how we might address either the question of an appeal process? And does anyone have any comments on the overall concern of, you know, burning every day? You know, concerns of an excessive burning.
Appeal process would, to me, would be as opposed to the city council.
And that would include either somebody that's opposed to, to the permit being issued or against it? I, I forget, is there a notification process into all your neighbors that you're getting, applying for a permit?
Yeah, that would be, well, there is a notification process that you're applying, but the way it's currently written up, there isn't a notification that you've got one. So in that type of activity, there would have to be some requirement, either on our part or the property owner's part, to notify a certain, you know, we'll have to identify...
Maybe they come back with a paper that's got permission from their neighbors to do it. That would be notification right there. And that would, that would, there wouldn't be an appeal unless it had already gone through because they've already got the neighbor's permission to do it.
Well, you know, if you look at the way the permits currently are written up, that is included. Not that they're getting permission, but that we will have known at the time that we approve a permit, whether or not any individual within a certain period of distance from the property has an opposition to this issue or not. So we would be aware of that. We simply just not, would not be, there's not any form currently involved in the process that requires them that once they get a permit, that they run out, notify their neighbors that they got the permit to do this.
How many of these permits, you know, people have come before, talked to anybody here, have asked?
One, maybe two. And I can't tell you on the surface, based on what I've been told, whether or not they would qualify under a hardship, that I would personally feel that they would qualify under a hardship clause either way.
On the other hand, I've had three or four people say, I wish you would open up any more burning.
Well, I'll continue to take it back and work on addressing those portions of our concerns.
But let me ask though, I mean, is there enough interest within the council to move forward with Jim's opposed? I mean, I guess there's enough hoops that they have to go through.
Well, I've worked because I thought it's a situation I'm thinking of, you've got no neighbors anyway, so.
I look, I want it strict, not that they ain't going to be used. But one thing I'm thinking about, a day like today where you have this stuff, they have no pickup, they don't have anybody around. If they had to, they could wait a week or two, it's something dry, and then they could go out and dry away and burn. No big deal. That's the only way reason I wouldn't need it.
Can branches be burned as a recreational fire?
Sure with your waders.
Put a hot dog in a beer, like me or John.
But it can't be burned on, it has to be in a container when it's burned, and you can't just...
How long ahead do you have to have this permit then?
Well, assuming you go through all the steps and get an approved permit, you could use it the very next day, under the terms of...
My stuff is going to be dried out by the next day.
It says you have, you said you have 14 days, okay? So say you were awarded it tonight, well, you would have 14 days to use that permit.
It's easier to make, put my 40 cent tag on a bag and let the city pick it up and take care of it, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, in this case.
In this case, right here, yeah.
Well, I'm doing it for nothing, in this case.
Oh, that, yeah, I got a question to ask you on that too, if you're open. Did you get your question answered?
Yeah.
Did you get your question answered, Bill?
Yeah, I feel just fine.
I'm not going to hold things sleep or either way, but I just keep cabling it.
Well, we're just kind of, we're just having to add, given that in further direction, kind of...
You spinning these wheels or... Okay, are you, do you have anything else to say to him about it?
Nope.
Okay, then we are moving on to 6J. Consideration of approving specifications and going out for bids on electrical service for North Fifth Street projects. Adam?
Um, you will see, and I'll go ahead and talk to both of them together, you will see that there are two bid packets. One is for the electrical portion of it, and one is for the structural portion of the North Fifth Street project. You might remember, due to the cost value that's built into the project, it requires the process to use our bidding process to hire the portions of the job. The, most of the language here is legally in basis, protections, responsibilities, warranties, control, you know, stating of prices over a certain period of time. They have to commit to the price for a certain period of time of the bid. You will, there is a third packet of bidding that is not included in this group, but that's because, in meeting with Laura, we really didn't feel like it was necessary at this time to move forward with the third one, and that would be the landscaping side of the project. Quite frankly, that could wait till, when we're very close to being done with the other two aspects of the project. Steve Perry has a question.
Steve Perry?
One thing that we've talked about at Chamber Board is possibly doing it ourselves, the landscaping portion.
Bill, within these bidder packs is some crossover between the electricians and the contractors. As you can envision, they will be working hand in hand. There's even aspects within the bid packs that the contractor, we could turn them into a general contractor under the terms of this bid packet. They have to give us an outlined price for electrical services under the contractor's project. So, and the terms of the contract basically says that we can eliminate or add anything in at the base price. So you can simply turn something that says that we estimate 10 hours of electrical work into zero hours. So what I guess, what I'm saying to you is, is that even though we're putting out for a separate electrician, technically, we could hire the contractor, and if we like his price for the electrical work, we could just hire the contractor and he could serve as a general contractor instead of a separated out contractor. Under the terms of what they're required to bid within their packet, that is a possibility in the way our packets are built.
Do you have anybody in mind to send these to?
I do think that we do have some interest for the electrical side, and I have heard that Chamber does have a couple of entities that they think would be interested in the contractual side.
Okay, I didn't know whether this was going to...
You'll notice there's about nine pages on each one, and if you really get down to it, like at a hard, about six of the nine pages are legal, legalese for the most part.
Need a motion to go out for this then, Adam?
Yes.
6J, consideration of approving the specifications for electrical. Are you ready to make a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve going out for bids for electrical services on North Fifth Street project.
These are due on Friday, July 22nd.
6K is consideration of approving the construction?
Okay, the vote.
Oh, excuse me, call for a vote, I'm sorry. Councilman Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Okay, number 6K then is consideration of approving the construction services for North Fifth Street. Ready to make a motion to approve?
I'll so move to go ahead with the consideration of approving specifications on the construction services for the North Fifth Street project.
Second.
Is there a call for a vote? Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Thank you. L is, 6L is consideration of setting public hearing on possible vacation and sale of the East West Alley lying between Block Six, Early's Edition.
I have to laugh. You'll notice there were some maps in your packet that were supposed to show you the alleys and streets, and I noticed that the highlight doesn't actually come off on your copies. So I have a little difficulty identifying exactly what is included in this. Why don't I describe this one to you a little bit? This location in Early's Edition, there, we've had a party come to us that's interested in the possible purchase of this property. We, I checked with the utilities as we do in all of these processes. None of our people had an opposition to the sale of this alley. So at this point, we would be just simply be setting the public hearing to hear back comments from those that may or may not want us selling this and putting it back on the tax sales.
And that date is July 25th?
Correct.
Is that correct for the public hearing?
It has to run in the paper, so we'll put a notice in the paper, which is included in your packet, that would identify for the public that we will be having that. And then what we would do after that public hearing is, is instruct the process of going out to receive bids on that.
So I need a motion to set the public hearing as July 25th.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been seconded to set the public hearing date to July 25th for the sale of East West Alley lying within Block Six, Early Edition. Call for a vote, please. Councilman Brandy?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
6M is same date, July 25th, for setting a public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of the East West Alley adjacent and joining the north half of Lots One and Two of Block Seven of College Edition.
Just to identify this one a little bit for you, this would be the alley, alleyway on South Ninth Street, just south of the ravine.
Is there any discussion or any questions around that?
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for that, sale of East West Alley adjacent, joining the north half of Lots One and Two, Block Seven.
Second.
And the motion has been made and seconded. Would you call for a vote, please? Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Where's that alley?
That alley is immediately south of the Central Park area, basically nearly right across the street from you.
Okay, and, 6, and is consideration of setting a public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of Dunkum Street lying east of the east line of 17th Street, lying west of the west line of 16th Street, adjacent and adjoining Lots One and Five of Block Six, not previously vacated, Early's Edition.
We earned our money trying to figure out how to write this one up. It's, it's basically a piece of Dunkum Street that has never been developed. It's on, it's basically right in between 16th and 17th Street, and if you go up there, you, other than there not being a curb up there, you wouldn't know that there is actually a road right of way through the, or road running through that area. We vacated 10 feet on both portions of both sides of the road, some, some time back to the adjacent property owners. That left the 60 feet in the middle that is still owned by the city. And so that 60 feet portion running between those two roads is what we're looking at.
So moved to approve setting the public hearing. Or, let me read, I suppose I better read this. For possible vacation, sale of Dunkum Street lying east of the east line of 17th Street and lying west of the west line of 16th Street, adjacent and adjoining Lots One through Five of Block Six, not previously vacated in Early's Edition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, would you call for a vote? Councilman Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
6O, consideration of resolution number 2011-07 entitled Resolution Hiring City Employees for Fiscal Year 2011 to 2012.
Every June, we approve our resolution for the purposes of hiring the employees. It's based upon the terms and agreements built into the budget this last January and February.
Make a motion to approve.
What are you approving?
Resolution 2011-07, entitled Resolution Hiring City Employees for Fiscal Year 2011 to 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call for a vote. Yes?
Just out of curiosity, now, this year that we backed, wages back, is this following through with, you know, the, you know, there's always a lag of a year, and that reflects this, is that correct?
Well, it was approved in the last, the last labor negotiation agreement was a 2% raise. So what you'll see reflected this year would be a 2% raise for the management team, but you would not see that reflected on the, on the employee base.
They would be getting the zero.
They would be getting the zero from last year.
Correct, that's what I wanted to know.
Would it, I'd say that would be appropriate, leave Mike's name in there.
Yes, because technically it's still employee, it's his last check.
Would that take effect after July 1st, or would it be?
Yes, he will, he will, he'll have his last check after July 1st.
Well, thank you for your questions. Motion has been made and is seconded to consider, or to, a resolution hiring city employees for fiscal year 2011 to 12. Now we'll call for a vote. Councilman Brandy?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
6P is consideration of appointing Darla Austin as acting superintendent for the Sac City Water Department.
DNR, Julie Seabees of DNR did request, when we were aware Mike would not be back for some time, that there was the request by DNR that we take action to recognize someone at the water plant who would be serving to run day-to-day operations.
He's qualified to be DNR's?
He is qualified, he does have the necessary...
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Darla Austin as acting superintendent for Sac City Water Department. Would you call for a vote, please? Councilman Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
6Q is discussion on proposed state legislation pertaining to cities. Adam put a good packet in there telling about all of the things that the League of Cities is giving us information about, and it is basically for information-only purposes. So I suggest take time, look and do that. There's some pretty interesting things, and if you have feedback on those items, you need to talk to the League of Cities people. They really do lobby for things for us. They do a good job.
There's some minor adjustments to, to what the police department, their policies and protocols. There's some minor adjustments to how we report to the alcohol division. There's some minor things in here. There's also some discussions about copper theft and what the powers of the local municipality are for that purposes. So, yeah, there's a lot of little things in here. If any of you have any questions about the stuff you see in here, just let me know. I'd be happy to talk to you about them. Some of them, we're just now putting our heads around. And then, of course, there's other provisions that aren't approved at this point that will likely affect us, particularly as the budget is approved, what will happen with the rollback, which I can tell you what the League's telling us is, we do expect some form of rollback to approve, to be approved. We just don't have a clear, a clear understanding of that.
Okay, move on to our committee and department head reports. Have you been to any meetings or anything, you have anything to report?
No, I just wanted to go. This isn't an official committee that, you know, is part of the city, but there has been a Chamber Main Street group that's been organized to look into and promote the adaption of the new Highway 20 into our protocols as far as, you know, taking advantage of it. And Ben Wallace, who's the director, is the official biologist for the Black Heart District of the DNR, he and I, we met with the Department of palpitation, engineer and the county engineers, as well as the contractors, making recommendations to the benefits for recreation, efficient habitat, the rural fits on Highway 20. We did that a while ago. They're looking into possibly incorporating some of those changes.
I attended the Kids World Board Meeting and also the fundraising affair at the Sac Country Club, and I don't have a report on what they raised yet, but they had a steak dinner, and they had a silent auction. And I would say there was probably 60 to 70 people there, maybe. And so the next meeting, we'll have a report on what they made. I also went to the Community Center Board Meeting, and they're instigating a lot of new programs. One of them is, they're setting up birthday parties where you get a choice of what you want to do, what you want to have to eat, what games you want to play, and that will be advertised. They're also starting something that one of the members of the board knew about called pickleball, and they're going to try to start a league with pickleball. It's supposed to be a lot of fun. It's with a paddle, it's kind of like ping pong, and it's low to the ground, and I guess it's very popular in a lot of places, and a lot of fun. We're also looking into having a laser tag day, but all of these, that one is still in the works, but it'll probably be this winter sometime.
Laser, not famous.
Get it, they're working on these new windows and new doors, and there's a lot of projects in the wind which require a lot of money, so we're just consistently work forward. Anybody else?
Correct word, Matt. Kind of camp around, you see, just up and, you get time, a lot of things that don't need to be, some tension, I assume you got most things done already, so.
There is some issues with the volleyball court lights. They have been shut off as we work on the electricity for those lights. The only other thing I thought I would say is on Thursday night, there is a fire board meeting, so just going to point, council, there hasn't been a meeting this week.
I did run thank you to Mr. Engel for having the cemetery in good shape for Memorial Day. He was very appreciative of it.
And he, I visited with him the other day, and he was concerned about knowing for sure what flowers stayed, what flowers went, hope that it was very well described to him, because he didn't want to get in any of that again. Okay? Is there anything else for discussion this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we left out a really important part. Okay. Do you have any, sorry, I'm going to cancel for him. Do you want anything?
I don't have anything. Just say the name of the issue.
Okay. I would take a motion to go into a closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I know that.
I request we go into closed session for my performance evaluation.
That being said, I'll make a motion to go into a closed session for that purpose of city council evaluation.
It's been, motion's been made and seconded for a closed session for the administrator's performance evaluation. I'd call for a vote, please. Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Thank you to everybody for being here. Call for a vote?
Councilman Hampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Brandy?
Yes.
Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Councilman Proheart?
Yes.
Is there a motion to go back into open session?
You have.
Oh, okay, all right.
Now, what our findings was after closed session was that we have instructed the mayor to, this evaluation sheet will review that with you in the next two working days, and then the two of you will come back with agreement for next year. And then we present to the council, present to the council the next meeting, correct?
Okay.
Anything else before we...
I'll second it.
No, that was just our finding.
Fine.
Okay. I'll wait, but take a motion to adjourn.
Right here, I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Call for a vote.
Councilman Proheart?
Yes.
Councilman Johnston?
Yes.
Councilman Hampton?
Yes.
Councilman Brandy?
Yes.
Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
I'm surprised I didn't mess that up. We are adjourned.
We're out of meeting, but I would like to ask, we've, I talked about what we should do for my, it's got to be personally, it can't come out of the budget. Then, we've talked about maybe putting up...